Good evening, being seven P M. I'll call it toward the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Mr. Hendricks will lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation this evening, we have Reverend Tom Went from Unity Spiritual Center in Woodstock.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start my invocation with gratitude for all that this board and previous boards have done for this county, some of which was so eloquently stated by Chair Bueller during your State of the County address. It's wonderful. Then I'm going to close it with a vision of hope that we can somehow come together in a civil manner as a community, not only within this county but beyond these county lines politically, that we can respect each other and continue on in a way that involves commiseration and cooperation. Because Unity Spiritual Center is a spiritual movement, we pray from the divine presence or the spirit within, as opposed to one without, however you pray though, is just fine with us. And so let us pray. Let us give thanks that we live in a county that is safe and secure and prosperous. We give thanks for all the divine energy that these board members and the citizens of this county have put forth to create what a beautiful, beautiful bouquet and tapestry of differences and similarities that have come together to create this beautiful community in which to live in. We give thanks not only for the seeds of possibility that have been planted by this board and boards far, far in the in the past, but all those seeds that will be planted in the future. We will be sitting under the shade of those wonderful gifts someday. And lastly, let us all know, let us all know in our hearts that we are better together. Let us all know that there is a way to come together when sometimes there seems like there is no way. Let us call forth right now the great spirit within each and every one of us to come from that place that does not think in words but just knows what the right thing is. And then we all go forth together creating a vision of hope and seeing that vision to fruition. In the name and in the nature of the living Christ, I say amen.
Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Althoff. Campbell. Collins. Gattamuller. Greeno. Hendricks. Kaminsky. Kearns. Krieger. Conkell. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Sullivan. Thomas. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. That's seventeen, Chairman.
Okay, having a quorum, we'll proceed. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Gattamuller makes the motion, Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Shorten. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Good evening. I'd like to start this evening with a moment of silence to honor the memory of Correctional Officer James Udison, who passed away after a heroic battle with brain cancer. James was a dedicated member of the sheriff's team, a devoted husband and loving father, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you. Now that we've actually gotten some snow this winter, I'd like to start this evening by thanking our McHenry County Division of Transportation for keeping our highways clear. Thank you as well to the McHenry County Emergency Management Agency and Director David Christensen for bringing together county leadership in the run-up to last Wednesday's storm to assess its potential impact on county operations and public safety. Also, as we committed to doing at the manufacturing resiliency meeting EMA hosted last summer, we shared our insights and projections with our business and manufacturing communities to help them better assess the impact the storm would have on their operations. And speaking of the EMA, it will be our pleasure, immediately following board members' comments, to recognize the twelve EMA volunteers who earned the Presidential Volunteer Service Bronze Award for their hours they graciously and selflessly worked in twenty twenty-four. And immediately after that, it will be our pleasure to welcome Congressman Bill Foster, who is here to present McHenry County with an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar check to help pay for relocating the Union Pacific Northwest Line rail yard from Crystal Lake to Woodstock. I'm sure the governments of Crystal Lake and Woodstock would have loved to have been here tonight, but their city council are also meeting tonight. I guess the third Tuesday of the month is a popular day for government meetings. Well, we have Metro Board Representative Ken Kahler here tonight, and he lives in Crystal Lake, and we have former Woodstock Mayor Brian Sager right here on our board, so you two fine gentlemen can stand in. And also joining Mr. Kahler will be Metra Chief Transportation Officer Vic Flores and Senior Legislative and Community Affairs Liaison Caitlin Dot. While I touched on this in my State of the County address last Thursday, I want to congratulate the Planning and Development Department for implementing its new online permitting system. The new portal allows residents and businesses to apply and pay for building, zoning, and stormwater permits from the comfort and convenience of their home anytime, day or night. This is not only streamlining the development process and cutting red tape, but it also saves taxpayers and applicants money. Thank you to Director Adam Wallin and his department for a job well done. And finally, tonight, I want to thank everyone for their positive feedback and kind words for my State of the County address last Thursday. It was a pleasure to speak to everything we accomplished last year, and I look forward to working with all of you this year to accomplish even more for the constituents that we all serve. And that concludes my report. Do any members have comments today? Ms. Greeno.
Thank you. In the wee hours of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Katie Abraham and Chloe Poulsen were killed in Urbana, Illinois, while on a weekend college visit in a hit-and-run DUI. The suspect is an illegal alien from Guatemala arrested by federal agents eight hundred miles away in Texas on a bus to Mexico. McHenry County authorities and law enforcement have publicly stated that we are not a sanctuary county. They have also stated that we will work with the federal government to protect the safety of the citizens of McHenry County. And on February twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, this board passed a resolution opposing H B fifty-four seventy-one protecting public safety. The Tenth Amendment Supremacy Clause, found in Article Six, Clause Two of the Constitution, establishes that federal laws and treaties made under its authority constitute the supreme law of the land. That means that federal law generally takes precedent over state laws. The citizens, constituents, and taxpayers of McHenry County can be thankful for their public safety and the enforcement of federal law. But we must also remember that when a crime has been committed, such as the one that took the lives of Katie and Chloe, there are accessories to that crime. Joe Abraham, Katie's father, emphasized that anyone who helps a perpetrator should be held accountable and face justice. And we also need to remember that for any criminal, there are those who are housing them, feeding them, giving them transportation, and employing them. Let's not just take Joe's opinion, but let's also remember the outcries for the murders of Jocelyn Nungare, Kayla Cuevas, Nisa Mickens, Kayla Hamilton, Lakin Riley, Rachel Marin, Sarah Root, Molly Tibbetts, Dominic Duncan, Shalay Estes, Tessa Tranchant, Ronald de Silva, and countless others who are unknown to us. May our county never be in the news with the name of any of our residents who have been murdered. Let's stay vigilant about the root cause and address it.
Mr. Conkell.
I would like to take a minute to congratulate Darby Hills on assuming the role of Illinois State Senator for District Twenty-Six. Like myself, Darby comes from humble beginnings and is not a career politician. Excuse me. The Hills are an outstanding family and do great work in our communities. Darby is a go-getter, a hard worker, and I believe she will be a true asset to District Twenty-Six. Thank you.
Seeing no further member comment, we'll proceed to special recognition. I'll entertain a motion for item nine A, Emergency Management Volunteer Award presentation. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Ms. Campbell seconds, and Ms. Campbell will read the proclamation.
Thank you. Emergency Management Volunteer Award presentation. Whereas on behalf of the President of the United States, the McHenry County Emergency Management Agency would like to present the Presidential Volunteer Service Award to twelve of its volunteers for their tireless efforts and personal hours worked for their community in twenty twenty-four. Presidential Volunteer Service Bronze Award for one hundred to two hundred and forty-nine annual hours: Ryan Brossard, Kurt Clifford, John Dewey, Ricardo Garcia, Pam Campworth, Alan LeBeau, Bill Pickett, Jim Raspopo, Rick Sluson, Tom Tim Sparkman, John Zels, and Sue Zwerzicki. Commitment and dedication, along with the desire to serve, are part of what makes the volunteer great. These individuals have demonstrated the innate ability to assist their government and its residents in times of disaster and emergency. We are indebted to each for their service. Dated at Woodstock, Illinois, this eighteenth day of February, A D. twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. I'd like to say a few words of gratitude before we vote on this matter. I can't thank these volunteers enough for the work that they do. These twelve volunteers donated a total of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three and a half hours of their time in twenty twenty-four. That's just shy of a year's worth of hours for a full-time employee. And if you add up the total hours for all EMA volunteers, you get almost three thousand one hundred and fifty-two hours. That's the equivalent of almost twenty months of full-time work. Our EMA volunteers assist with public safety at community events, assist our law enforcement and first responders, act as storm spotters when severe weather threatens McHenry County, they respond to fires, floods, and other disasters, and more. They do so for no compensation. Their desire is to serve their community as their sole motive. So thank you all so much for your service, and thank you to Dave Christensen and the EMA staff for nurturing and developing this volunteer network. And the network keeps us safe and saves our taxpayers' funds. So thank you so much. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you so much. Dave, do you want to come up and say a couple of words? Oh, I'm sorry, Brooke, come on up.
Just going to give everybody their award if you don't mind us taking a photo. Do you want to?
What do we, we just line up in front of the board here?
Yeah.
Do it all at once?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. Next, under special recognition, we have Congressman Bill Foster, who is here to present the McHenry County Board and our partners with Metra with an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar check in federal funding for our Woodstock rail yard project. Large-scale transportation projects like the rail yard do not happen overnight and require substantial investments, not just from our local governments like McHenry County, but from our regional partners in Metra, the State of Illinois, and the federal government. Thank you, Congressman Foster, for your partnership and for helping us to secure this federal funding to bring the rail yard another step closer to fruition. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Congressman Bill Foster. I'm a scientist, I'm a businessman. It's my honor to represent this area as part of the eleventh congressional district in the U.S. House of Representatives. And I'd like to start by joining the recognition of the twelve Emergency Management Volunteers, who are presented with the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. You know, I just want to thank them for their invaluable service and their commitment to the McHenry County community. And I want to thank Chairman Bueller from the McHenry County Board for allowing me to present and say a few words here during tonight's meeting. During my time in Congress, it's always been one of my top priorities to ensure that Illinois receives its fair share of federal funding. And it's also my duty to make sure that when that federal assistance arrives, it arrives in places where it does the most good for those I represent. And that's why I was proud to secure eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in federal funding to help build new improved rail yards in Woodstock. By providing more storage capacity, this new rail yard will make Metra's operations more efficient, meaning that we'll see more frequent service on the UPNW line through McHenry County. And with more trains running, it's not just good for commuters. This will bring more consumers to the small businesses that make the communities here in McHenry so special. By moving the rail yard away from its current location in downtown Crystal Lake and next to the police department, we're also improving safety in that area. First responders won't run the risk of being blocked when they need to rush to the scene, and pedestrians will face less congestion when they're heading downtown. And I know this is a project that many have been looking forward to for a long time, and I'm glad that we're able to help get it across the finish line in the U.S. Congress. So thank you again. And now I'd like to invite everyone up to help formally receive this check.
Sure, yeah. Can our Metro Board Representative Ken Kahler's here tonight. Come on up, Ken. Metra Chief Transportation Officer Vic Flores and City of Woodstock Mayor Emeritus Brian Sager to come forward and help me formally receive this rather large check.
And where is this conventionally done? This is Brian Sager.
We'll get the, we'll get the whole board in there.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just.
I should point out that the check number here is actually the number of the bill in the United States Congress that provided the funding for this.
Everybody smile. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to zoning, do any, or I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda. Mr. Gattamuller makes the motion, Mr. Sullivan seconds. All in favor, say, or actually, Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item ten B one. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Gattamuller. Any discussion? Ms. Campbell?
Just because Larry's not here, I'm going to fill in for him. Just as a reminder, this was voted down in Z B A, but these resolutions are brought forward in the affirmative. So if you would like to approve it, it's a yes. And if you don't want to approve it, it's a no, just for clarification.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item ten B two. Mr. Sager makes the motion, seconded by Ms. Althoff. Any discussion? Mr. Scala.
Yes, good evening. After Thursday's committee of the whole meeting, there were several things that I had brought up regarding the conditions that were presented for both ten B two and ten B three. And I thought it would be best to have those in writing, which I placed at each of your places, to codify what I had discussed on Thursday. I also incorporated into this document, I had a couple of board members that came up and wanted some changes also, so I incorporated those into this document also. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the changes that I made. I won't spend the time going through each one individually. I just wanted to make a note, at the request of staff. So number thirty-one was an addition that was added, or that was originally in the two thousand and three conditions, so I added it back in again. But staff wanted me to make a comment about how this is kind of an anomaly based on the property owner being within the geographical area of the square box, I should say, that this request is being made in. And no way is my intention to make this a standard practice or something that we should be looking at added to other conditional uses that come about. And it's more from a logistics standpoint for staff. I don't want this to be precedent-setting. So it's really kind of just an anomaly based on the conditions that this particular request is being made.
Are you making a motion to amend?
I will be, yes. Do you want me to? I can answer questions first, but yeah, I can make a motion if you want to get it on the floor first.
Let's, let's make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the conditions, basically removing the ones that were in our board packet and replacing them with the ones that are at your board seats this evening.
Okay, is there a second? Are you making a second, Mr. Kearns?
Yes.
Okay. And let's discuss. Ms. Althoff?
Just a question. Were all of these items discussed with the petitioner? And if so, can you elaborate on what the response was?
I did speak with the petitioner's attorney about the different changes that I'd be making. I don't want to speak on the petitioner's behalf. There were some things that I know they were not in agreement with, but I would say, for the most part, most of them, they were in agreement with.
Okay, any further discussion on this amendment, Mr. Sager?
I would just ask for clarification relative to those comments from the petitioner. Please.
Mr. Scala.
Well, do you want me to go through each one of these, then? I don't know how else to do that.
Do you have a particular one that you're interested in, or in general?
Okay, so then, in six A, changing it from thirty to sixty, that was, that was acceptable. The berm going from eight to twelve was acceptable. And the, doing it from the center of the roadway so that there was a measurable point was fine. Building the berm along the east property line was acceptable. The hours of operations, changing Saturday to twelve but still starting at seven was acceptable, and removing all the aburbancy language was acceptable. I did, you know, there was a, we didn't talk about holidays, but, you know, I did put in national holidays just because I felt like it needed a little more clarification. I'm not talking about, you know, here in Illinois, we celebrate a lot of holidays that no one else does.
Pi Day.
Huh?
Pi Day.
Sure. So I was trying to, I was trying to be a little more clear that these are, these are like, you know, Christmas Day and Thanksgiving Day and like national holidays, not just what Illinois decides is a holiday.
What about Sunday?
No, there's no Sundays. Let's see, let's continue going here. The number thirty with the signage, you know, that's, that was acceptable, understanding that there is no, you know, the trucks that are leaving are not owned by the operator. So, you know, it's not like he or the owner can control which way trucks go. So that's out of their realm of what they can control. They're okay with putting the signage up, you know, but again, understanding that it's really an enforcement issue, it's not something that they can control. And then number thirty-one, which was what was in the two thousand and three, I know for certain they did not want that in there. And number thirty-two, after discussion about the testimony and everything, they were okay with thirty-two, which has to do with the depth of the well.
Okay, Mr. Sager.
Yes, so for point of clarification, everything was acceptable with regards to the amendments that you're proposing, with the exception of item number thirty-one, is that correct?
Yes.
So then the question becomes whether or not we would be looking at So, then the question becomes whether or not we would be looking at including an amendment to 31 as well. So, that's kind of the question on the table from my perspective. I would like to ask the petitioner's attorney to verify that, yes, all others are indeed acceptable to the petitioner. Seeing a head nod, thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing no further comments, all in favor, say aye to the amendments?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We're still on the original motion to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10B3. Mr. Sager makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Collins. Discussion? Mr. Scala?
Again, I would make a motion to amend the conditions, to remove the ones that were in our board packet and replace them with the conditions that I had put at everyone's place for this evening.
Okay. Mr. Kearns seconds the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye to the amendment?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Back to the original motion to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Just a reminder that this is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes in which to do so. First up will be, or when the light comes on in front of me, if you're not done in three minutes, I would ask you to summarize your comments and wrap things up. First one up, Nancy and Alan Shovel. Don't wish to speak? Okay. Mary Patrice Went.
Good evening. I had the privilege of watching your recording of your committee of the whole last week. And in listening to tonight's presentation, I realize and am grateful for the very difficult decisions you make as a board. I'm grateful for all the things that you've accomplished in the last year, and know that, gosh, when I moved here 30 years ago, that you probably had to make a lot of very difficult decisions then, that impacted people, that changed their quality of life, changed their communities, because I was part of that influx back in the 90s. And I wanted to share my appreciation for your authenticity, your transparency, and my story. Because of the difficult decisions you make every time you meet, people like me benefit. When I moved here 30 years ago, I was a young family. I had two children, two young children, and one on the way. And it wasn't long after I found myself here in McHenry County that I became a single parent of three young children. And the opportunities that were here to support me were tremendous. I found grants, I found people willing to work with me to make it through so that I could go to McHenry County College, earn my associate's degree in science, while still holding on to my place of residence with my three young kids, and then transferring over to NIU to earn my bachelor's degree. I taught special education for 20 years, went on to earn my master's degree in reading, still raising my family here in a community that wrapped its arms around us through their events. The police department had little cards that you got to meet the officers with, and you got to win possibly a trip downtown to one of the museums overnight. We have had so many wonderful memories here because of a lot of tough decisions that you make. And I want to share with you that my children now are grown, all three. All three have college degrees and are self-sufficient.
If you could summarize your comments, please.
So, I wanted to thank you for all the work that you do here. I understand how difficult it is, and you have my support and love. Thank you.
Next, we have appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment to the Emergency Telephone Systems Board as of February 18, 2025. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Ms. Campbell seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, do we have any committee chairs or liaisons with reports for us tonight? Seeing none, we'll proceed to routine consent agenda. Do members have items that they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Ms. Greeno?
16B.2.9.
Any others? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda, less item 16B29. Mr. Gotamaller makes the motion, Mr. Kearns seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 16B29. Mr. Sager makes the motion, Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Discussion? Ms. Greeno?
Thank you. An acquaintance of mine, who received their MPA, which is a master's in public administration, did their thesis on the progression of influence between administrative staff and elected boards. What was found, that over time, administrations tend to run the board usurping the power of the represented constituency. Bureaucracies bleed their hosts to death, ultimately harming the very entities that they are meant to support. There was no predefined process for the negotiation of this contract. The contract is in excess of $1.368 million over the next four years. This during the time of DOGE, of public accountability, of taking out bloated excess in government on behalf of the taxpayers. I must vote no on behalf of this contract, because I represent my constituents until I'm directed by them to do otherwise. I also just want to say that the First Amendment right is endowed by God and consecrated by our U.S. Constitution. It is essential to maintaining a democratic society and ensuring that individuals can freely express their thoughts and beliefs. It is truly what makes this society classless.
Mr. Kunkel?
I did notes, so I don't have too much zeal in my passion for the people of McHenry County. Sometimes I get ahead of myself with that. I don't like to read notes, but these are my actual words. My job here is really quite simple. Not easy, but simple. I bring the voice and the will of the people of District 1, and I present that voice to this county board. Choose to ignore them at your own peril. In the past few weeks that this contract issue has been before us, I have been inundated with citizens with concerns on this matter. 100% of the communicants to me were not in favor of moving forward the contract for the administrator. Some of them cited the high salary cost. I personally don't believe the cost to be that egregious. Others believed after almost 20 years, the power has shifted away from the people and the board to the administrator. This is why in the United States, a president only runs two terms. It's a common phenomenon in government. Lastly, some are very unhappy with past transgressions and are very upset and are looking forward to a new and exciting future with the changing of the guard.
Seeing no further comment, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
Couple things. I noted last time, or I guess on Thursday, that NACO was doing this series.
Hey, Pete, your mic?
Thank you. Get my head elsewhere. I was noting that NACO has been doing a series of webinars on the first 100 days of the Trump administration, and they are doing another one this Friday at noon, Central Time, 1:00 Eastern. I found them to be pretty cool. They're like 20, 25 minutes, or like little webinars just about what's changing and the impacts on local government and what the next few weeks might look like. So, if you got the moment, I would encourage you to go onto the NACO website and log in, or just shoot me an email, I can forward you the link. You know, on that topic, I know that over the weekend, when I say the topic, the topic of, you know, us trying to keep up with the pace of change in DC right now, and over the weekend, there was an article that on Mark Picos and the MCEDC, perhaps, you know, trying to get ahead of, of trying to understand what's happening with tariffs for some of our local businesses. And in the article, there was a suggestion that there will be webinars. And there may be. I spoke with Mark today, and he was like, I really want to be a help on this, but we're not quite ready to help. The dust needs to settle a little bit more, and we need to, you know, kind of understand some more. So, while the article suggested that the webinars seemingly were imminent, I don't think he's quite ready to say that yet. He is committed to meeting individually with businesses who have concerns, so if there are individual businesses that want to meet and share ideas, he's ready to do that, but he is not ready to host webinars at this point. So, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit on Mark's behalf, because I did speak with Mark about that a little bit this morning, and I kind of wondered if we were quite ready for that kind of a webinar. The only other thing I want to note is, this past Saturday morning, I went to Union, to the McHenry County Historical Society, to see Gloria and Pam's presentation on the Underground Railroad and its impact in McHenry County, and I was truly impressed. And so, I just want to say thank you, and we're proud of you guys, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Pete. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Shorten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Have a good day. Night.